I call to order the August 6, 2025 Committee to the Whole Council Meeting. Would you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, emergency services, Chief Hand here?
I'm here, my report is submitted.
Okay, anything to add?
No, we're good.
All right. Infrastructure, Counselor Lebedinsky.
What's in the bag?
Okay. Transportation, Counselor Proxel.
No meeting.
Meeting and the ordinance review.
Most of the meeting, we had a guest engineer, David Lasante, kind of give us a whole rundown on impervious surface and land development.
Right. Economic development, Ms. Lee Clark.
Good evening, Councilors, Madam Mayor. So, the first thing that I want to make everybody aware of, and I hope the public will participate, every 10 years, the Montgomery County Planning Commission does a comp report. So, there is one that they're working right off of now, which is 2040. The next one, a committee that I've been working on with a group of people throughout the county, is 2050. And so, you have an opportunity to see the draft plan and offer feedback and comments. They're coming to Pottstown, it's called Pizza With A Plan, so they'll feed you pizza too, if you register for it. And that is going to be Monday, August 11th, from 12 to 2:00. They have been promoting it, but they did ask me that they get people, that if you're interested, please register. There are seven chapters to the plan currently, people in health, transportation, conservation and environment, government and utilities, housing, places and land use, and jobs and workforce. And remember, this isn't just for the borough or this section of the county, it is for countywide. So, if you would like to participate in that, you just have to go to the Monaco Planning website, and you can register for that date. That is the comprehensive plan for the county. I have a few more statistics for you, which I'll share in a few minutes. I did want to highlight Caribbean Paradise, if you have not been there yet. Patrick is really all in. He has multiple locations, but he has been very engaged in going to multiple things around the community. He's had his food truck at various events throughout, and he really is happy to be here in Pottstown and wants to be part of positive positivity. So, please make sure that you go in and see him. And if you want to stop by Agnes Edmonds, although it has been a long time business, Bridget, who is the current owner, is celebrating her 10th anniversary of owning that. So, please offer her your congratulations. Little bit about statistics. These statistics we get from Valley Forge Tourism, they are on a monthly basis. So, there is data that they collect through credit card holders. It is not through, it is not through cash. So, these figures, you have to remember that they pull out cash from this because there's no way to capture it. There is a weird way, they follow people around on your cell phones, is really what they do. But this is, this is data just for credit card holders. So, in the month of July 25, compared to 2024, there has been a 32% decline by tourists in spend. So, in July 25, the average spend was $75 per cardholder when they visit here compared to $109 last year. There were, I think I shared last month, that 17% of our out-of-town visitors come from New York in July. There was 20% of those visitors came from New York City, with an average spend of $60. The next place that they came from was Wilkes-Barre Scranton area. 13% of the visitors spent an average of $121 here. And then, Counselor Lindsay, DC, 9%. So, visitors spent an average of $106. The main area that they're spending money is retail. Now, I do have to say, that is not just downtown, right? So, Wawa can be pulled into that, into that data. The next area is gas, the areas where we really don't see a lot of movement, and that's because maybe we don't have as much to offer here, but hopefully in the future we will. 11% in accommodations and 1% in arts and culture spend. The categories of individuals who are spending is ages 65-plus, 26% of the spending was from that category or that group. Their average spend was $81. There were 20% of 45- to 54-year-olds that spent an average of $63. And then, ages 55 to 64 were the 18% spend category, and they spent an average of $55 when visiting us. So, that is my report.
And from the land bank?
There's really nothing new to report.
Right. Mr. Vasoli from the library, I don't see him. Human relations, Ms. Levin, good. Jump ahead.
Good evening, Councilors, Counselor President and Madam Mayor. National Night Out is an event to promote police and community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. Pottstown did that last evening. By enhancing relationships between neighbors, businesses, police, fire, and medical responders, it brought true sense of community to Pottstown's neighborhoods. The Commission's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 12, at 6:00 PM in council chambers, and all are welcome to attend.
Right.
Thank you.
Joe's not here. Ricketts is Kirkland one.
No, he's, he won't be joining us.
All right. And the school district, Counselor Lindsay.
I have nothing.
Nothing. From the mayor, Mayor Hendrick.
I have some. That's okay. Good evening, how are you? Since last time, we had our meeting with the Youth Drug and Alcohol Prevention Coalition, and we're in the process of matching members' skills with the task at hand. We had our Tri-County Dems picnic at Riverfront, the weather was actually perfect, really great turnout. Pottstown Play Streets was a huge success. I just want to thank Parks and Rec and Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation, although they're the Pottstown Foundation now, sorry, they rebranded. Like, I don't know if you guys know, but you really have an impact on these neighborhoods and these kids, and like coming, commuting from Conshohocken and showing up at like 6:00 and frazzled, and these kids are smiling, it's pretty amazing to see. So, thank you. Hope Capital Investments had their grand reopening ceremony, they obtained their broker's license, so now they can like do pretty much everything from property management to selling, doing real estate deals. I also cosponsored the National Carousel Day with Joe Cerisi, and the carousel had over 500 riders that day. It was so packed, it was so much fun. It was great to see everyone out. And then, I went to my first Pottstown Pride at the Schenckle United Church of Christ. Really great vendors, Bingo was there, they had our Montgomery County Commissioners, and Senator Katie Muth was there, so it was a really good turnout. And then, I attended the ribbon cutting for Prism, so First Baptist Church opened an LGBTQ+ Community Center, which is a safe space and provides education and support and resources for individuals in the community. And I really want to thank Reverend Marcia Bailey and Joel, that was a, there were so many people there, it was so great to see. I also got to see Guys and Dolls at Steel River, and I know it's over, but they were all teens, 13 to 18-year-old actors, in this play, and it was absolutely fantastic. The next show for Steel River is Wizard of Oz, October 10th through the 26th. And I think next year, maybe the parking issue, when there's shows that collide with the car show, maybe should be revisited just on that one day, because there was some very unhappy elderly people that left the show that couldn't then get to their cars after, and the staff had to like walk them, and it was a little difficult. National Night Out, we had a third location last night at First Presbyterian Church, which was packed, it was so great to see, especially for a new location. And I got to see that Trellis had started putting in these beautiful planters for a garden project, so that is in the works. And then, we had our Community Leaders Breakfast Meeting, Community College. I want to thank Amy Altwater and Roseanne Barr for hosting. All right, upcoming events, tomorrow, Thursday, August 7, 4:30 to 6:00, the White MCA is having their backpack giveaway. On Friday, August 8, through Sunday, the 10th, the USA BMX Quaker State Nationals are coming to Trilogy Park in Pottstown. The race starts at 1:30 on Friday, I'm excited, I'm going to be at the opening ceremonies. This is like a big to-do, guys. So, I'm really excited about that. And Saturdays in August, Pottstown Manor has their open house, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, where you can see colonial music and cooking and blacksmithing. It's very cool if you haven't ever been. Let's see, Tri-County area, Active Adults Center is having their Bingo fundraiser, August 12, 5:00 to 7:30. And August 14, from 9:00 to 3:00, Pottstown Health Center at 364 King Street has their distribution for free potassium iodine tablets, so anyone who lives, works, or is a student within 10 miles of the limerick generating station is eligible to receive this free medication. I am going to go get some, because I think the ones in the cabinet, they expire, so obviously. I think ours are from 2012, so please go pick those up. For Ward 7-2, Thursday, August 14, from 5:30 to 7:00, Wincroft is having happy hour for the neighborhood. Beacon of Hope has their Progress picnic at Memorial Park Pavilion, August 16 at 4:00 PM. August 23, from 4:00 to 8:00, is the Veterans Island Go Forth fundraiser at the alley. And then, of course, I was hoping Jamie would be here, but the Low Show is, starts Thursday, I think, August 28 through Saturday, August 30. No, sorry, Sunday, August 31. I have too many dates in here. And we have a couple, save the dates for September. Fett on Blanc is September 12, if you haven't gotten your tickets, I think there are some still available, but go to Page's website. Saturday, the 13th of September, from 10:00 to 2:00 is the Pet Fair at Memorial Park, also at Memorial Park. I'm excited, because this is the first time two events are coinciding at the same place, so we can go to both places. Both events is the First Annual Suicide Prevention Awareness Car, Truck, Jeep, and Bike Show fundraiser, which is hosted by Wheels For Another Day, and they support local outreach and race funds in partnership with NAMI. And then, do I have any golfers here, Andrew?
I garden on the weekend.
You garden, okay. Well, the Greater Pottstown Tennis and Learning is having their golf tournament fundraiser at Spring Hollow Golf Club. Monday, September 15, they need players, sponsors, they provide over 1,000 students in the Pottstown area with tennis experience, and they also have an amazing community programs for people with disabilities. And just two quick announcements, fall semester's open for Montgomery County Community College for the session starting August 27. And the YWCA has an energy bill relief application period just opened, August 4, and they already have almost all the applications filled. But if you are struggling to keep up with your PICO bill, and you don't normally qualify for assistance, traditional assistance, but you do need the support, PICO has a $500 credit through their customer relief fund. So, if go to, sorry, what's the website? Or you can go to the YWCA's website and apply there. And again, you need to do that soon if you would like to be considered. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Very good. And from our manager.
All right, good evening, everyone, I have a couple of updates for you, just to add on to the BMX event in Memorial Park. The King Street parking lot will only be accessible through paid parking admission during that event, so just so everyone's aware if they're trying to access the park that day. Some more good news on the grant front, we were notified that the U.S. Soccer Foundation approved our grant for a mini pitch at Pollock Park, so that's really exciting for us. We want to thank all the partners that were involved in that, as well as Parks and Recreation and Director Lenhart for authoring, helping author the grant application for that. And so, we're keeping an eye on that, because as you know, we're doing some remediation at Pollock Park. Fairly confident that we can get it installed in Pollock Park, but if we can't, we have an alternate location in Maple Street Park. So, we'll be working out those details in the next couple of months. And then, across the street, at 860 Cross Street, you'll notice some progress there. So, the park improvements have really come together well over the past couple of months, the paving and the basketball stands are now installed, and we're going to look at opening that park in the near future, which will essentially be in addition to Pollock Park. And if you recall, this, this land was through a long-term plan that was approved by council to acquire a vacant brown field site from BASF for recreation use, after we kind of explored all possible avenues for redevelopment of the site. So, this is one of the waypoints in the agreement. Once BASF completes the park improvements, which includes the civil remediation plan, and once that's accepted by DEP, the borough assumes control of the site through a long-term lease. And then, that can go on for many years, and then, once the groundwater remediation receives clearance, receives clearance from DEP, they'll actually take ownership of the site. So, that's kind of where we're at in the whole process. The good news is we're getting close to opening. In the interim, we'll be approaching the taxing bodies to ask for tax forgiveness on that site, since essentially, we'll be controlling it long-term. Couple authority project updates, the authority did complete their 2025 water and sewer main replacement project, and as well as its Phase 2 lead line project. So, currently, the authority's contractors working in the area of Rupert Elementary to complete test pits evaluation for that project area, and they'll be working on replacements in that, in that vicinity soon. They also completed the painting of the Jackson and Willow Street water tanks, so that will ensure the long-term durability of those facilities. And then, just following up on PICO, so PICO is kind of, they were in that area near Rupert Elementary earlier in the, in the summer, late spring. They're now moving out to what we're referring to as kind of the North Evans Street corridor, so there'll be intermittent traffic interruptions and detours in that area, so please plan accordingly. And that work is expected last through October, I think they were out there doing some line marking and some initial excavation today. So, that'll be the following areas, North Evans Street, Lincoln Avenue to King Street, Walnut Street, or Charlotte Street to Franklin Street, North Franklin Street, Union Alley to Rowan Alley, Leisure Alley, North Evans Street to 322 Leisure Alley. And then, just a final note, we just want to let council know that Jocelyn Charles of Bortertown Multi Service did step down from her role to pursue other opportunities. So, I know she's working with the board and assisting them in the interim while they find a replacement for a new executive director. So, I just want to say that, you know, personally, I enjoyed working with Jocelyn, she was Pottstonian through and through, did a great job for Bortertown Multi Service and the Ricketts Center, so wish her the best of luck. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Land development, Mr. Hovey.
Yes, President Ween, this relates to 301 Keystone Boulevard. This is actually the applicant is seeking retroactive land development approval. They had expanded their parking lot and installed fencing, and it was determined that that required land development approval. That's been reviewed at this point, and it primarily focused on ensuring that the stormwater management facilities were up to code. The Planning Commission has reviewed this and recommended conditional preliminary final land development approval, subject to the applicant satisfying the review letters. And they've also requested several waivers, which relate to the need for environmental study, as well as trees and landscaping. The Planning Commission also recommended you granting the waivers, you know, subject them, to them paying, you know, the required fees under the ordinance.
Okay, any questions? List that for Monday.
Okay.
And next, Mr. Hovey, zoning issue 204 East High.
Yeah, this is a zoning application to the zoning hearing board for 204 East High Street. There is a hearing scheduled on the application for August 27 at 7:00 PM. The property consists of three commercial units and two residential units. The applicant would like to convert the commercial space on the second floor to a third residential unit. The variance specifically is the zoning ordinance requires a minimum square footage of 800 square feet for a residential unit, and they're seeking a variance to make that unit 706 square feet. This will be listed for you for Monday, and just like any other zoning application, you can decide whether or not you want to take a position for or against, or remain neutral on the application.
Got it. That one. And LSA funding.
Yeah, sorry, so things are moving along as planned for 657 Beach Street, so this is the old Borough Garage property. And this grant request is for $1 million in funding, in partnership with Habitat for Humanity, to reroute the underground stormwater arch with the goal of eventually selling the property at Habitat for Humanity to construct 10 unoccupied units for low to moderate income individuals. So, it would consist of five twin structures. This, this part of the project would just cover the arch relocation, and the initial estimates are 1.5 million, including engineering. So, the borough match for the grant would be 160,000 for the engineering that would come out of our capital reserves for stormwater arches. And then, of course, you know, we're still a ways away, we still have to secure the money, but once we get to the point where we would be in a position to repair the arch and demo the building, we would need to relocate the CCLU mural that's on that building, so I've already been in contact with some of their members and told them that we're still a ways out, but start to think of other locations where you would want to move this mural should things come to fruition.
Okay.
So, we're asking for approval of that resolution on Monday night.
Good, list that. 13, the drone housing agreement.
The drone, the drone housing agreement, as you're all familiar with, the District Attorney's Office would like to install drone housing on top of Borough Hall that would be integrated into the Sharpshooter Program. This was initially listed for council last month. The initial motion was to approve that request, subject to an agreement being drafted with a final form, subject to the approval of the manager, solicitor, and chief of police. It's my understanding that during that discussion, then, questions and concerns were raised about the security of the drone, as well as other questions related to the usage of the video and the drone itself. The motion was amended such that council wanted to review, to get answers to those questions and review a copy of the draft before acting on the request. In the interim, the chief has reached out and had interactions and discussions with both the District Attorney's Office and Brink. As of this time, though, we don't have sufficient answers to those questions, and as a result, Chuck was not able to prepare a draft for your review. We don't anticipate being in a position to do that before Monday night, and so our recommendation would be to table this until September, till that information can be obtained and a draft can be prepared.
Matt, is there, do they give you any timeline? Is the, is, because sometimes the county tends to top-down negotiate, or, and sometimes it's hard to get answers in a timely fashion. Do we have any time that you guys are going to be able to see that, or are we waiting for a response from them?
I don't want to speak for the chief, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, I don't believe we've been anticipated time for when we'll receive that information from Brink of the District Attorney's Office, so it's a little open-ended at the moment.
I appreciate the concerns, but, you know, given the benefits, I believe drastically overweight the risk of, you know, agreeing with the last month's proposal. I think it's just a matter of public safety, we've had two shootings since then, and if there are more that happen in the future, I would like to have that drone available to us as soon as possible. So, I would like to make a motion to approve the agreement that we had last month.
We can add that for Monday night?
Or can we do it now, Matt? Matt, is it possible?
Yeah, I mean technically, there's a motion on the floor, two points on that, you know, again, Committee to the Whole typically is designed to set the agenda for Monday night, but this is a valid meeting of council, and it's advertised such that you can take business tonight, you know, as long as the business item has been properly listed on the agenda. So, this is technically a live topic that you could take action on. The motion on the floor, to clarify, there is no agreement in place as of now. The initial motion was to authorize a preparation agreement, you know, sort of with staff approving the final language, rather than coming back to council. So, to clarify, Counselor Proxel is, that essentially what you're doing is reverting back to the original motion?
Yes, and then the councilors can interact with staff as they draft that, I would say. Correct?
Okay. So, that's the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And there's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I would hope to. I, I don't like to say this, but what do we, what, what exactly, I don't know what you're proposing, what are we proposing? You're proposing to, to approve an agreement that isn't in existence?
Oh, to move forward with it.
To create the...
I just, what exactly are we, I don't know, the answer's...
Pretty much what we talked about last month, I mean, it's, at least it had some issues, which are valid, you know, I appreciate them, but I, I think this could benefit us so much more to get it up there, you know, you know, as soon as possible, because I'm not sure how long it's going to take to get the answers that she wants back from the manufacturer of the drone in the county.
So, I guess essentially...
If that's what's holding, go ahead, Matt, I'm sorry.
For clarification, I mean, what you're, what you're more contemplating is a basic lease agreement to allow it to be used without necessarily answering, the answers to those questions are incorporating anything special into the lease agreement, is that correct, Counselor Proxel?
Yes.
So, there is a document that exists?
No, there isn't.
That could, that could be ready to be signed?
No, there's no document in existence, so again, the initial motion sort of deferred to staff for the final terms of whatever that agreement was.
So, we would just be moving forward, waiting for the document to come back?
That's not counsel, that's not, as I understand, Counselor's Proxel's motion, essentially, he's, I don't, I don't want to speak for you, but I get the impression...
Well, I understand, I mean, you have the authority to, you know, work with, you know, the DA's office and create a, you know, agreement for the use of the drone, and then council has time to, you know, speak with you guys as you do that, if they, if they choose to.
In implementation of the system.
So, we're bifurcating the issues, is that what we're saying? Okay, we're going, in other words, if you, if the motion passes, does that mean that, like, say tomorrow, the, the drone goes on the, on the, on the, on the Borough Hall? Is that what happens? I don't know what, I'm just trying to find out what happens, if we say yes.
Seriously, definitely, just, you know, to allow staff to, to work with the DA's office to get it up there, that's where I understand with it.
Once we had a draft agreement, couldn't we send it to council individually, and if they had comments on it at that time, we could incorporate those comments?
I just want to get it up there as fast, in my opinion, it's, I'm very much for... I'm very much for this, so...
Yeah, yeah, and, and I think a lot of us are all for this too. It's technology, it's often, I think the chief is, is all in on it, but I don't know if there's an agreement that needs to be, if a lease needs to be worked out, then a lease needs to be worked out. And so far, my experience with the county has been negotiating, it's, it's very slow, okay? Because sometimes when you push back and say, I would like this, they are very upset with you. They'd just like us to take what they have like we're children. We're not children. We have 22,000 people to be responsible for. So what I'm saying is, I want these things too, okay? But we got to get the legal agreements in. And I, I, I just, I'm trying to figure out what, I'm still not sure as if I were to say yes, what I was saying yes to. And I won't say yes to something I don't know what I'm saying yes to.
Sure, again, just trying to clarify for everybody. You know, the way, the current action from last month is, is you want to come back and see the physical draft and approve that. In Counselor Proxel, you're, you're trying to skip that part of the process and just have...
No, really, one is just what we approved, we were going to prove last month, which I believe, we don't have to skip necessarily, but I, if we don't get, whatever the concerns were, were this, it might take a long time to get those, you know, satisfied. So I think if I can, I would just like to pass what we were going to agree to last month.
Sure, that, the original motion from last month was a motion to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement to stall a drone nest on Borough Hall in conjunction with ShotSpotter in a final form acceptable to the Borough Solicitor and Borough Manager and Police Chief.
Absolutely, yeah, that would be the motion I'm making.
But we don't have that. Because, Matt, you just said that the solicitors, you, Chuck, haven't gotten agreement on the issues that were in the, that we've put forward. Are these issues, this, the privacy issues that are holding this up? Or are they logistic issues, are they normal lease issues? What are the differences between the two? Okay, because I know that, and I'm not speaking for you, Lisa, but there's a lot of privacy issues that you're concerned with?
There's privacy concerns, yes, from me, from constituents. And I think we owe it to our town to get those addressed and not gloss over it like it doesn't matter.
Oh, okay.
It really matters, but if somebody shoots somebody, runs in my backyard, hides in my bushes, I'd be more than happy for the thing to hover over my house and find the individual.
I understand the fear, I get that. We all live here, right? There is shootings. But the recent shootings, no matter what we voted on last month or what we're waiting on, this device would not be here to prevent or help with any of those. So I get fear-based thinking, but there is security issues that, again, we owe it to our constituents and to ourselves to ask those questions. And if you don't, and you don't have answers to at least some of them, you are risking fallout in the future that you are not going to be able to control.
I think the risks, or the benefits outweigh the risks in this case, so that's fine.
Well, I'm not sure where your benefits and risks come from. I know where mine come from, and I laid it out. That's all. I have questions, I will stand by my questions, and I think we deserve to have answers to those questions. You do what you want.
Okay, you, no, that's fine.
What I thought we were waiting for is an agreement to have the drones parked on the roof here. Okay? Isn't that different? I don't know how those issues have anything to do with privacy. Like, like, this is a lease, okay? It's a lease. So I don't understand why, I don't understand what the holdup is. Were you going to incorporate these privacy issues into the lease? Is that what we're doing? I, I don't know what this, what, why we don't have an agreement.
Yeah, I, I think that was Chuck's understanding. Again, I wasn't here last month, and in my discussions though, my understanding is that, based on the answers to those questions, there may be things council wanted to incorporate into the agreement as far as, as far as how the drone would actually be operated. In part, and then the question was depending on, depending on whether, what your satisfaction was with those answers, whether you even wanted to lease the roof and allow the drone up there to begin with.
Okay, that makes, I now understand a little bit. Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
If we go forward with this...
Yes.
They would come to an agreement, the county with our three representatives. So do we, we trust our three representatives to properly do their duty.
So council wouldn't be able to review the document? You want three representatives to make that decision? Because that was asked last month as well, that council would be able to review it.
Well, as, as the details are worked out, they can provide council with the information.
I can't vote on something if I don't have the details in front of me.
Okay. I would trust our three representatives.
I don't understand what we're voting on either. You're voting on something we don't...
To park a drone on the roof.
I understand that. But I also talked to Chuck, and as I understood it, we didn't have it last month, we wouldn't have had it by this month anyway. So I don't really understand how we can vote on an agreement that we don't have or that hasn't been finished yet. And I really don't understand where the holdup is. If a couple of questions throw something completely off track, that's a problem. And if people are trying to prevent counsel or input from counsel, that's also a problem. So maybe I just don't understand exactly what we want to vote on tonight.
Yeah, I mean, just trying to clarify, I mean, Counselor Proxel, I think essentially what you're trying to get at is you would just like a standard lease agreement, really without anything special incorporated into it, so that this can move forward as quickly as possible? Is that correct, or, in terms of clarifying the motion?
Yeah, I mean, if it's timely, that they could do it, for Lisa's concerns and whoever else's, but, you know, it could, like Andrew said, it could be a long time before we get exactly what she wants.
I, I...
Exactly do I want, that's my question. There is several questions that I have that, answer five of them. Like, that should not be an issue, this shouldn't be an argument. Asking questions and voicing privacy concerns should not be seen as being difficult or uncooperative. And it's concerning that this has taken so much time to get basic questions answered. Nothing I have asked is over the top or should be difficult to answer, it's basic software information. So I don't, are there questions specifically we can't get answers to? Does anybody ask a question? I mean, we've worked with the county, and it was brutal to get a basic question answered or to move forward with anything. So it's disappointing to me that nobody really seems concerned about any of this, and we just want to bring this type of technology in, into our town with no questions asked. And there's going to be no way to go back and get those answers.
I think our three representatives will bet it very clearly.
I don't.
And just to clarify again, I don't want to speak for the chief. I know the chief has had compiled specifically your questions, and that has been communicated to them.
Any more discussion?
Theoretically, if the, if the motion comes, motion passes, would that spur, by, by this time next month, would we have the drone installed on this, on this roof? If we were to, if, if we were to say, go and do this, would it be done by then?
Chief, do you have a sense of how quickly they can move on it?
I know, I know, it's been installed in Norristown, it's been installed on Montgomery Plaza, which is a building owned by...
Right. But, I mean, would, like, if we said, if we voted yes, would there be a drone on our...
I could, I could tell you that.
I think the assumption is, is that however long it takes, it's another month that it'll take. Like, once we give them the okay, it's another month that it'll, it'll take, another month that'll add on to the timeframe or whatever that is.
Right, if we go forward, then the answers would come back to you, the chief and our solicitor. And you would can, be in communication with council, what those answers were, and we could all give you the feed, our feedback.
Correct.
Isn't that kind of what I asked for? I would like council to review it, so I don't understand the difference. If we're going to get input anyway...
All right, by doing what, what Ryan's asking, it's not cutting out council. It's just not, we're not going to hold another meeting. They're going to inform us what, what the answers are.
So they won't be public? It won't, there will not be another public discussion?
I know, we can make it public.
But there won't be another meeting? I'm sorry, I'm confused about what you're saying.
We would be informed of what those answers are, and we can all individually communicate to our three representatives whether we agree, disagree, what objections we have.
What about the constituents? That's where I got some of my concerns from.
That's why we're elected, that's why we don't have 23,000 people up here. We're here to represent them.
But I listen to them, and they deserve answers as well.
We can make that public.
Can somebody let me know that if, if we were to do this, that those cameras would be, or the, sorry, the drone would be installed faster? That's...
I can tell you what I was told last night by the district attorney at National Night Out.
What's that?
I can tell you what I was told by the district attorney last night at National Night Out, just the timing. I don't know, I don't have any information, but other than that, it's ready to go, like, they're pushing it. Like, it's...
It's ready to go.
Like, needs to be like synced up with the, the other one in Norristown. Like, it's ready.
It's ready to go.
He hasn't, yeah, I don't know what that means.
Do we know what has to be built on, is there buildings, is there things that have to be installed on the roof? Or they just, is it just like a pad? What, what do they do? Anybody?
It's a nest, it was in the video that we showed.
Okay, but like, is, but just to...
The drone came out of it, that's what they want to put on Borough Hall.
But is, do we have to install things? Is, is there things that the borough has to do to ready the surface for that on top of here? Is there, is there any construction that needs to be done? Will work have to be done? Will there be a fit-out, anything?
I would assume there's some things...
Yeah, okay.
I don't know that there's construction that would have to be done. I would assume some kind of electricity would have to be brought to it because...
Right, yeah, so there's got to be some, okay. And does anybody know how long that would take?
It, it wouldn't take that long, I mean, maybe a month. It's, you're talking about a bracket that you'd sit it on.
Whatever has to be done.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm trying to explain, it'd be a, a bracket that you sit it on, and if we don't have electric outlet nearby, then we would just have to extend one from up there. So it's not, not a lot of work.
Okay.
I'd assume an electric car could be charged with a, with a 120 service.
Yeah, and are any of the things that were raised, okay, by anyone, Matt, are they liability issues that, that could come back to us as a borough if we do not get the answers to those questions before we, we sign a lease to put something on our borough building? Is there anything that, in other words, if, Lisa, do you have anything on that either? Like, what would, what are we exposing ourselves to by not doing this?
Picks up another crime that's unrelated, what happens to those people? If it catches images in somebody's house, how close is it supposed to fly to somebody's house? Things like that, I mean...
But does that put us, what I'm saying is, does that put us at risk?
I would think so. I mean, if you're putting, if you're catching images of me or you're going after somebody that's unrelated to the shooting, I, I'm not a lawyer, but I would assume somebody could come after the borough for that.
Let's go, let's go.
We have an expectation of privacy in our, sorry, in our backyards or unless we had like a, basically like a fortress around it, because...
Drones can see in a window.
You know, all the neighbors now have Ring cameras, they're pointed everywhere, right? And so there's cameras everywhere. Who thinks that they have an...
But you can't point into somebody, you can't point into somebody's window on the side. Can't, okay. We had that whole situation here. So you, these can't, you can't do that, okay? Because that's an expectation of privacy. When you're looking at the street, there is no expectation of privacy. When you, okay, but you're facing a street, those windows. However, the side windows, if somebody has their Ring camera and it's pointed at you, get it out of there, okay? Because you, you can't be having cameras pointed at side windows. There are liability issues, okay? If we can handle, if there's liability, I, I don't know. All I know is we're being asked to waive something that, that could be a liability issue, but it's not, or is it?
From the video, like, it seems like it just takes off and goes up about 100 feet or so, 120 feet, goes and drops down roughly where, where the incident happened, from my aerial view. I...
I, I, I...
We, just to clarify, we wouldn't be, we're not responsible for operating the drone. The county operates the drone, we're just giving it a place to nest.
So the county would be liable?
The county's liable, not us.
I mean, I don't know.
It seems like there's an awful lot of questions without a whole lot of answers or actual facts about what will happen and when. It's all assumptions, a video that's not really about here.
All my feedback has been overwhelming positively.
Listen, I'm not against it, I literally work in technology, right? I am on, I mentioned that, yeah? Because I think it gives me some credit. I met with a security expert about this specifically.
Excellent.
Yeah, I mean, all I can do is go off of, off the cuff with personal knowledge on this. As I understand it, we're just leasing the nest, we're not the operator of the drone.
Okay.
In terms of liability flowing to us for, for operating it, I, I don't know that it, that it would. There is also Pennsylvania law that, that already regulates drones in a way that invades people's privacy. I would assume that this would still be subject to that, even though it's being operated by the police department. Beyond that though, I...
Okay, even though the, the, even though the information collected by the drone is going to be used by the, by Pottstown Police, okay? If images that should not have been disseminated get put out, are we responsible for the operation of that drone? Or is that drone operated under the auspices of Montgomery County? And any liability that occurs by virtue of this drone operation is not assumed by the person who's just docking it, or the entity that's just docking it, okay? But is, but is assumed by Montgomery County? Is that the case?
Well, I can't speak to the definitive case, but I would expect the agreement to include indemnity protections for us.
It has to.
Right.
So that's one of the things that our three representatives must enforce.
Why are we hung up on three representatives only and not having council?
Because they're not going to send it to all seven of us.
Why?
It's going to them now, our three reps can disseminate it to us.
Why don't they want to send it to all seven of us? It's generally an email.
No, the condition of this motion is to allow this town to be represented by three officials in this, in this negotiation.
But, but to clarify though, for staff's sake, as far as what the marching orders are here that's being contemplated, I mean, is it to move forward with a standard lease and get this up as soon as possible?
Yes.
Or it's contemplated that staff is still going to wait for these, answers to these questions, then circulate that to council and be approved more informally? Because I sort of am hearing both things, and I don't want staff to be in a position that they do, do something wrong in the event this is approved.
My, like I said...
It's about the motion from last month, correct?
Right, well, when I clarified with Counselor Proxel, he wanted a standard lease and to move as quickly as we can on this with or without those answers, as I understood it.
I, I have faith in our representatives that'll do, do diligence and make a correct assessment of the drone.
All right, and Counsel, Counsel Ebedinsky, you seconded the motion, do you have that same understanding?
Yes.
All right, so that, that is the motion essentially, that this is going to move as quickly as staff can with a standard lease, with or without the answers to those questions.
But Ryan, you, you also are, if, if the liability issue, if somehow, we are somehow liable for anything that goes on with this, you're not okay with going forward, unless the liability issue is taken care of.
Yeah, I don't see a tremendous liability, because it's really the, the... Yeah, I don't see a tremendous liability, because it's really the, the, you know, DA's office.
I, I, I do understand that, but... If, heaven forbid, there was some, uh, images that were disseminated through, I do not want them coming back to us. I want them coming back to the operator of that, and that would not, not the landlord. But, okay, I would like the, I would like the responsibility to be on the landlord and not the tenant, or the, the person who is... We're just providing a docking place for them. What they do and what they provide should be covered by them and not by us.
And if we had an agreement, we could see that.
Well, that, that...
I can speak for Chuck and I, though, on that point, though. I mean, it would include proper indemnification. I'm sure it wouldn't go as far as how the footage is used in actual police investigations or prosecutions or things like that, but if you're concerned about the general use of the drone and, you know, being hacked and things like that, you know, if I was drafting the agreement, that would be part of the indemnification. We, we should not take on liability for that, and, and that would be in there, whether that's now or three months from now.
I don't think the DA's office is gonna stream it on Twitch or anything like that. It'll be very well considered.
Do you think government things have not been hacked in the past? Do you think information that shouldn't be out there is now out there?
You expect an individual to wait for a crime to happen and then hack into it while it's happening?
Why do you think people hack medical records and your credit cards?
Well, you don't wanna go for it, that's, that's fine, but that's all I have to say.
I'm just asking the question.
The drone is not harmful. It doesn't do anything other than videotape. It doesn't shoot anything.
And how do you know that? Like, I'm just asking.
I know there's no weapons on the drone.
I wasn't talking about weapons.
That's what I just said. It doesn't shoot anything, it doesn't drop any, like, it doesn't pose a, like, a safety harm if somebody hacked it to send it to somebody else's house, other than...
That's not the type of hacking that I'm necessarily talking about. It runs on software. Software can be hacked. What third parties are involved in that? Do you always trust the government? I certainly don't.
I don't, but my stuff got stolen by the, from the IRS, so like...
Excuse me? That was, I didn't hear you.
I said, my information got stolen by the IRS. There are hackers out there. I'm saying the, the, um, risk of this being hacked, what somebody could do with it when they...
Based on what?
...hacked it, would be just video, like, wherever they're pointing it to. It, it can't...
And you're totally okay with that, without asking any questions about that? Like, I, I, I really don't wanna have to vote against this, just because it seems like most people are just flat out wanna argue about basic questions and protecting ourselves. And that's fine. It's just, it doesn't make sense to me, and I don't understand why there is such a holdup over something that shouldn't be an issue. Everybody here should be concerned. Everybody should always ask questions. And the more you fight the questions, the more suspicious I become. I don't, and I don't know how to say this, um, so I'm just gonna say it. I don't tell you how to be lawyers. I work in technology. I, my word should carry some weight, and it should concern all of you. It's not just me that something's gonna happen to. It, and something bad might not happen. I actually think this is a really good thing, and it could be helpful. What really concerns me is the lack of questions, the lack of knowledge, and allowing three people that don't live here to make these decisions. That's what concerns me. I really don't wanna have to vote against this.
Anyone else? I have a roll call vote.
What are we voting on there?
That's the problem.
You want a question, here it goes.
Did you read it? Read the motion.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll read the spirit of the motion, expressed experience. The, the motion essentially is, uh, you know, to direct staff to, um, prepare and execute a standard lease agreement, um...
With an indemnity?
You know, for the drone to be...
With indemnities, okay? With indemnities, complete indemnities, okay? So whatever we're concerned about, okay? If it turns out to be, it ain't our problem, it's theirs. That's all I care about, okay? Whatever it is, it ain't our problem, okay?
With, with proper indemnification of the Borough. You know, and essentially move forward as soon as, as soon as possible, with, with or without the answers from the county and bring. Is that correct, Counsel Proxel and Counsel Lebedinsky?
Yeah.
Okay. Vice President Lebedinsky?
Aye.
Counselor Lindsay?
No.
Counselor Minasstra?
Yes, because of the liability.
Counselor Proxel?
Aye.
Counselor Vanny?
No, unfortunately.
President Ween?
Yes.
Four yeses, yeses have it?
Okay.
Number fourteen is the Low Show Parking License Agreement. Mr. Hove.
I wish this one was less complicated than the last topic, but, uh, it's a little difficult to explain, um, so again, if...
I am here, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, so I'll kick it over to you in a second to correct anything I explained wrong here. Uh, it's related to the, the Low Car Show. The, the organizers want to use the college's parking lot for parking for the event. Uh, they approached the county about, you know, leasing or licensing the, the space. Uh, the county was agreeable to it as long as there was proper liability coverage. Uh, apparently, at this point, um, the county has changed their policy, and they require specific, uh, insurance coverage for harassment and sexual assault claims. Um, the, the operator, or the organizers have, have attempted to obtain that insurance and aren't able to find a, an insurance company who can offer that coverage. Uh, the county, in, in response, said that if the Borough were to lease or license the lot and then make it available to the organizer, public entities aren't required to provide that type of insurance coverage, and it would sort of be a workaround. Uh, if Council was open and agreeable to that, uh, you know, we would require an indemnity and home harmless agreement uh, with the organizer, and, you know, whatever happens at the parking lot would be covered under the, the current liability policy for the event, which names us as insured. Jamie, said you're on the line. Um, can you correct anything I said wrong and, and also explain to Council sort of the need for the parking lot?
Thank you. I apologize I'm not there in person. Um, I've got called to Florida for a vessel that's bringing vehicles for the show, and so I have to run down there overnight, unfortunately, so I apologize. Thank you, Madam Mayor, I was listening when you, uh, said you hoped I was there. Um, I think you've covered it pretty well. Um, we've used the parking lot since the first year in the Borough. Um, we do have event liability insurance that named them. Last year, just before the event, they added a clause for, and I quote, "sexual abuse and molestation coverage." Um, we, the, the parking lot is essentially unlocked anyway and kind of available for local use, but we, we don't put it on our map for guests coming into town unless we know that it's available, and, uh, we do not staff it. We do not charge for it. It is just public use. And our local insurance agent, Wagner Insurance, tried at the last moment last year to get a policy issued. They were unable to. We've been working on it for about six months and have drawn a complete blank on any insurance company or underwriter that will issue a policy when we're, we're not staffing it, we're not charging for it, we're not... We're not in the public parking lot that the gates open, um, and the college, as you said, does not agree to change that. It is in their policies now, but we have been informed by their Director of Government and External Relationships that, yes, if a government agency asks to use the lot or to make it available, then that is waived. Uh, so I think you've got it completely correct, so, yeah. I apologize for bringing this last minute, but we've, we've exhausted every possible channel, and I, last year we did not have it, and parking became an issue just because of the influx of visitors.
Matt, could you explain that again? I'm sorry.
I don't know that I can, but I'll try.
Is it the cost of the insurance, or the type of insurance, or the...
Nope, there's...
Okay.
The insurance doesn't exist. It's, it's, it's like they found a way to request an insurance that they have no idea who can underwrite it.
It's agreements.
We've approached, the insurance agent, Wagner Insurance, has approached. I believe seven different underwriters specialize in event insurance, and every one of them said, "This is silly. This insurance is not, does not relate to this. They won't underwrite it because there's nothing to cover. It's nonsensical," is the feedback we're getting.
So...
And...
Doesn't the college already have this?
It doesn't exist.
Doesn't the college already have it?
They, they likely do. They've put it in their two-page contract saying that, and they, in the emails, big bold letters, "This is non-negotiable." But they cannot provide anyone to...
What if you pay their premium for that for the day?
We have to have it ourselves with them named as a party, and we've just come to a loggerhead where we cannot find anybody to underwrite it. We, we put them, we have event insurance, we put them as a named party every year. But now, somehow last year, at short notice, this changed, and our very professional agent has...
Okay.
She's got annoyed by it, and she went to bat and went to every underwriter she could find, and it, it just does not make sense because we're not using toilets, we're not using any facilities, there's no closed rooms. We, we're not staffing it, we're not charging people for it. It's just a public parking lot that you could use on that day to walk your dog. You could probably go there right now and it's open and walk your dog, but...
Right, so...
You don't put it on the map.
Hey, do, do you have a comment for this?
Can you explain?
So, this used to be my job. So I was employed by Montgomery County Community College, and this used to be my job. I am in no way here to represent the college. I wanna be clear with that, but I can clear up some of the confusion.
Okay.
So, the parking lot, what has happened is the trustees have put more in place when you rent things, and there are levels of things that are rented within the college. So because the college is a county, a community college, any government entity can use the college without having to pay user fees. Like rent. What has happened in this policy is the parking lot has been captured and not separated out as if you would go use North Hall. So, the parking lot, they didn't take into account, right? So if you're in North Hall, you, the reason that they're asking for this is you could potentially come in contact with employees of the college, students of the colleges, et cetera, if you rented the space. This is not the case with the parking lot, which is, I assume, is why Jamie probably is having these issues. He may be able to get that type of liability insurance if he was physically in a building. He is not. He is, he is at an open lot that he is saying. So what has happened is the unintentional consequences of the college's policies have been caught up. This parking lot has been caught up. Does that help?
That does help, okay. But wait.
Again, I am not a representative of the college any longer, but I, I was employed for a very long time, and this was part of my job responsibility when I was at the college.
So, I, I don't mean to ask you questions, but I'm gonna, if you can answer.
Sure.
What can we do?
So what he's asking for, what Matt is saying is if you are the government entity, this is waived, right, because there's no fee, so you're the government entity that is going to be the people, is that correct, Matt? That you would be leasing?
From us.
And then they, right, and then you would give the agreement to Jamie to be able to use that park?
Yeah, essentially, I mean, well, the parking lot's still gonna be there and open to the public. If it's gonna be formally incorporated as part of the event and advertised as a place where people can park, what's being represented is that the only way forward is if the Borough formally licensed the, uh, the parking lot and then allows it to be used as part of the event, and any liability for the parking lot would then fall under their general policy, which protects us, just like their use of the streets and everything else. But we would have to formally take that, you know, that position.
And would we need a rider?
That is it.
And would that be a cost to us?
No, we, my understanding is we don't need to change any, any insurance on our end. We would require a, a identification and hold harmless agreement, uh, you know, with Low for the event, which would also require that the parking lot be incorporated into the existing policy that protects the Borough.
We're not taking the parking lot or anything.
No, it's just, it's, it's just licensing it for that time period.
Thank you, Matt.
I'm frustrated that I have to bring this in front of you, and it's, it's frustrating that this problem exists, but we've...
I was just trying to understand what the problem was.
Yeah. The problem is, it's a quasi-public parking spot that's available for the Borough to use, and we, I would, I would like to have it available for additional guests to come to the town to park, and it's become almost impossible to do so, even though it's, it's there. The, the license, we don't, you know, we're, we're not charging anything. There's no charge to me, there's no charge to the, to town, to the, to the Borough, except this impossible requirement that was waived if it comes, if you motion to, yeah, to, to have it come from you instead of me.
Okay. Another exception. Mr. Dur.
I, just to attempt to help clarify maybe the issue, as somebody who did risk assessment for a bunch of years in insurance, Low cannot get this insurance just for the parking lot, so they would have to be buying it, covering all of their operations for the entirety of the show. That would be very difficult, and that would not be cheap. For the Borough, the additional exposure is the same exposure you have for everything else that's part of the show, except it now extends to the one parking lot, I think is what the question is.
Yes.
I understand that, thank you.
Okay. Is it lim...
Thank you, everyone.
Is it limited to just sexual assault or molestation, for example? Let us assume if, um, somebody got beat up in the parking lot. Is that, does insurance cover that? Is it just a special kind of insurance that, like, you, if you get sexually assaulted?
It's a special rider on the insurance, specifically sexual abuse and molestation coverage. That's the rider that they need there, so...
So that's not covered?
That, that rider is, yeah, just, just not possible, and I, I...
Nice to know.
I suspect I'm not gonna be the only person or entity that runs up against this, because that parking lot has been used by lots of other things in the past. Um, we, we brought this up last year. The person at the college left. We then found out months later that there is now a part-time temporary facilities use admin, to quote their title. And so, that's why we've come to this impasse and to this point at this date, and it's, I apologize, and it's very frustrating, but that's where we're at. The, if we don't, if you vote no, if, if we don't do it, then we just have less parking, and we, we deal with it. That's it.
Okay. Any other questions? We'll list this for Monday. Okay, six ninety-seven North Handler, releasing the old harmless. Mr. Hove.
This one is a lot easier.
Oh, good.
The, uh, the property owner would like to put, uh, fencing in the right-of-way that's owned by the Borough.
Right.
Uh, we have a standard template agreement for someone wants, who, someone who wants to do that. Uh, you know, it includes releases, hold harmless identification, as well as the property owner agreeing that if the Borough ever needs that portion of the right-of-way, they'll relocate the fence out of the right-of-way at their own expense.
Okay.
Okay. Is that for Monday? Hmm, there at least. And your budget adjustments?
Yes, so these are attached for council's, uh, review and possible approval on Monday night and just a reminder, um, the mid-year budget adjustment refers to the process of assessing and revising the adopted annual budget to reflect changes in expenditures, often in response to various priorities or changes that arise during the fiscal year that were unforeseen when we, when we set the budget. So the important thing to remember is the mid-year adjustment only allows changes to individual line items within a fund. Um, but it cannot increase or decrease that fund rate, it does not increase or decrease the amount totally, um, budgeted. So, there's a variety of, uh, adjustments that we have this year. Um, we have some, uh, for insurances, this is because the insurances come in, uh, in July and it's not always possible for us to, um, we get an estimate, but it's not always possible for us to know exactly what's going to be in the insurance for twenty twenty five, when we're in twenty twenty-four, because you add facilities, you add vehicles, you add things like that, so there were some adjustments there. Um, also for the workers' comp, for the, for the fire. Um, uh, legislation, we had some additional, uh, advertising, uh, costs, which actually, uh, had to do with ordinances that were passed in twenty twenty-four that had to be codified into, um, the, uh, E-code online. Um, Parks and Rec, we had some higher, higher repair costs for the ricketts roof, the mandatory green, uh, floor repair. And then Parking Fund, we did have, um, a new, uh, expense there for parking tickets because it was several years since we, um, purchased parking tickets, so. Um, those are pretty much the highlights and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions? Very good. So, yeah, audit. Twenty twenty-four audit.
All right, so so far the audits are looking good, I can just kind of go over, um, both of them here. Um, there were zero findings for both, uh, both audits and, um, the, uh, financial statements, they do indicate that we qualify as a low-risk auditi, so that's a good thing. Um, with the Borough Audit, we have not received, we have all the final numbers, but we haven't received the final, um, audit yet because there's some legal reporting that needs to be, uh, done to them, so we're hoping to have that in, um, by Monday night so that we would be in a position for council to approve Borough Audit on Monday night, if not, we would have to move that approval to September. For the Authority Audit, that was approved in, uh, June at their meeting and that's complete and that would be ready for council's approval.
Very good. List those. Uh, it's both audits discussion, uh, machine gun conversion device lawyer.
Yeah, so, and I, I think the mayor brought that up, um, the last meeting, is there anything that you wanted to add in terms of the machine gun, um, conversion device?
Oh, I, for some reason thought we, did anyone watch the video that I sent, um, in the email? Other than that, I mean, I'd like to, if anyone's against it, I think we should write a letter just to, I don't know if it's gonna do anything, but to prompt, uh, the legislators to ban this.
Is there a draft available or would you like?
I will draft something up for council's approval for next month.
All right. Make it fast, is anyone opposed to this?
No, I responded to the email.
Yep. All right.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Very good.
Are we gonna list this for Monday night or for, hold this till next month?
We need a draft.
We need a draft.
Right, so I'm, I'm just making sure, the intent here is the table is till September, correct, not listed for Monday night?
Right.
Correct.
That's all.
Okay.
We're all a little confused, so.
Okay. Good question. Uh, street closure for the Wincroft School.
Yes, this is a closure that they do every year. Um, it would be Rosedale Drive in front of the school buildings.
All right, we'll do that one. And the Harb certificate of appropriateness. We've got K items, so we're doing a lot of renovations. Yeah, those are on. Upcoming board vacancies. Uh, for the Land Bank, one four-year term to expire June eleven, twenty twenty-five. Application, Glover. Uh, for Harb, one five-year term to expire April first, twenty twenty-seven. No one yet. Construction Code Board of Appeals, one three-year term to expire August eighth, twenty twenty-five. Again by Glover.
And he's, he's here. Yes, that's him.
Yeah.
Hi. Well, come up.
Yeah, come on up.
Come on up. Come on up.
Good evening.
And, and you also appear for the Environmental Advisory Council, so what's your preference?
Uh, I don't have a preference, wherever you guys can fit me at. Um, my only thing is, is that currently I'm doing my undergrad at the Virginia Military Institute, so that would be my biggest, you know, kind of ploy, um, is that I'll have to attend the meetings virtually. So I was wondering, that's why I wanted to come, kind of introduce myself.
Yeah. Okay.
Love it.
When are you graduating?
I graduated twenty twenty-seven, sir.
Wow! All right, I got that.
You just wanna get involved?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. What time of day would work best for you?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Like to, to apply, like to attend the meetings?
Uh, time of day?
Yeah, like
Doesn't matter, sir.
Okay.
As far as like my schedule at school goes, I could plan it out.
I love this. Well, the least amount of work would be the Construction Code Board of Appeals. Never meet.
That's true.
Okay, so, I've never had that meeting ever, so.
Zach, can I just ask why you asked what times would work?
So that he can attend.
Just so that we can make sure he can, he can phone in, if he needs to phone in.
Okay.
Cool. Really like, really like your energy, sir, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have two more clones and we'll fill all three.
I'll try my best, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Wow.
Remind me of my son.
Okay. Comments from our citizens?
All right, um, we have Art Miller, please.
Good evening.
Evening.
I wasn't here at the meetings physically, uh, last month, but I was watching them online. Mayor Henrik, you made some comments, uh, last month's meetings about having a secret chain to report info and fact-check ICE incidents. Uh, I'm, I'd like more information on what that is all about. Uh, are you saying that the borough's position is to hinder the Department of Homeland Security and Immigration Code Enforcements from doing their jobs? And, and removing these criminal illegal aliens? As a property owner and a taxpayer for the, in the borough of Pottstown, uh, I'm opposed to the borough aiding and abetting and harboring illegal aliens, let's get that out there. I'm opposed to Pottstown being any type of sanctuary type of environment for these criminals. As an example, recently, you know, once Montgomery County issued, July twenty-second, Pottstown actually arrested Oscar uh, Panate on multiple charges, including involuntary deviate sexual intercourse with a person of less than sixteen years of age. Involuntary deviate sexual intercourse with a child uh, of less than thirteen age, two counts of corruption of minors. And he was put into Montgomery County, who released him because of sanctuary policies. That's unacceptable. I wanna, I wanna know that Pottstown is not buying into this sanctuary garbage. Um, I want to remind you that your constituents are as taxpayers of the borough and residents of the borough, not criminal illegal aliens. Uh, your, your oath as the mayor is to uphold the constitution of the state of Pennsylvania. And as the chief executive of the borough, your job is to ensure that the laws are enforced. So if there's any aiding, abetting, harboring of illegal aliens, uh, that is unacceptable. Uh, so I would like a thorough explanation of what this secret chain is that, uh, I heard mentioned in the meetings last week, please clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, and from our counselors. Counselor Minosstra. Oh. Oh, go ahead.
Good evening. I wanted to come up and, um, make a request. Um, I did not formally put in a request to block off, uh, Charlotte Street between Beach and Walnut for our Harvest Festival, but Hearts of Humanity would like to have a Harvest Festival in October, on October the eighth. I do understand that there are some, um, revisions as far as timing is concerned, but we are still raising funds to get, um, to get our application in, to block off the street. So I wanted to put it on the record that we are requesting, um, to block off Charlotte Street between Beach and Walnut for a Harvest Festival in October twenty-eighth. I know that would be very close to council meeting, so just wanted to come up and put it out there so we could have it on the record. Thank you.
Where does she get a form?
You sign in police as well, um, and then, yeah, you'll just wanna fill out a form with the police department. You, you said you, you did it other years, right? Yeah, so just fill out the same form that you did for the other years with them and then we'll get you on your, on your right path.
Okay, Counselor, uh, Minosstra. Yeah. Um, happy to report
At now.
To report that, um, the goings-on at the, um, Days Inn Opportunity House Shelter are it's not terrible, okay, and, uh, so, uh, we have, I have been out there a couple occasions, I know some of the other counselors have been there on numerous occasions, and every time I've gone there, the, um, the residents there are happy, they seem to be well-cared-for. And when there have been issues that we have asked them to investigate, they have investigated them and given us, given us the results of the investigation. So on that note, I'm very happy about what's going on there. On the negative side, uh, the Sixth Ward has become a disaster area for the homeless. Um, I, and the, since, uh, two thousand and seven, when I, uh, purchased a building in here, I actually called the nine-one-one since two thousand and seven, exactly two zero times zero. Since the opening of the Days Inn, um, and the, the lack of room for those who aren't qualified to go in there, read that, people who are drug addicted or crazy, um, they are not welcome there. And since they're not welcome in Tent City, they have no place to go, so they are fanning out amongst this, the streets. I don't know if you've seen it, but I've certainly seen on many occasions, people sprawled out in, in, um, hallways and in alleyways, uh, in plain view of the site, clearly, clearly intoxicated or in need of distress. That is not going to help Pottstown, as a matter of fact, it might put us back decades economically. So what does that mean? What that means is that very shortly, the seven of us are going to look for answers as to what to do and how to solve this problem. And an unacceptable answer will be, it can't be done. We want answers to how we can move this forward because this is a problem that is causing serious issues. I had to call ten times. Okay, people are just and it's not that they're hiding, they're in plain sight. There has to be a way, and so we're going to look to the people that we pay, that the citizens pay in this town, to come up with solutions to address the issue of the homeless who aren't able to get into the homeless shelter because they choose to not follow the rules. There has to be an answer and we're not gonna take, uh, we don't, there's no answer. Counselor Lindsay.
Well, last Thursday, I took off for Play Streets on Spruce Street and it rained. So I was unable to do Play Streets. I was all bummed out too. I was all excited 'cause it was I was all excited because it was my, you know, my neighborhood and the rain took my joy away from me. So, anyway, um, I'm gonna go back to the drone and why I said no is because I just wanna make sure we see why us. I know the chief, I know he got us, I know he got our back and he not gonna let nothing happen in, in Pottstown. I just wanna make sure we have some documentation, that's all. I wanna make sure we have it in writing because this is CYA right here, you have some kind of documentation. So that's the only thing I said about that, it could be email, anything from somebody because, you know, you gotta make sure you have things like that from Montgomery County. That's it for me.
Very good. Ms. President Lubidinsky. Counselor Bailey.
Yep, a couple things. Um, first, I'm gonna start with the heaviest thing. I intentionally waited a few months before I reached out to, um, Aram Eckard. Um, I had talked to him early on. Uh, he actually came to my house, um, and he broke down, we talked for about two hours. Um, I just wanna acknowledge and remind everybody, they're dealing with a tragic loss and I'm concerned about them as neighbors, as friends, as they have been in my house, they take care of my air conditioning, so Pottstown does tend to rally around people and I just wanna make sure they're getting support. I know it's a horrible situation, um, but I am concerned about their emotional well-being. Um, the second thing is, I don't know if you can see my shirt. It says, this is what an AVM survivor looks like. I've talked about what I went through, um, but on Sunday, it was four years. And I wanna explain and bring some awareness to what AVMs are. It's an arteriovenous malformation, it's an abnormal knot of arteries and blood vessels um, that bypasses cap, capillaries, so it interferes with blood flow. The way most people find out about them, first of all, you're born with them, um, and they become apparent either by a massive stroke, a brain bleed, um, seizures. Luckily for me, I had a seizure which consisted of my finger going numb and my right eye blinking. I could have been dead. This AVM was massive, um, and we, surgery was not an option. Um, we did gamma knife radiation and they told me that it, I went to Jefferson. They told me it would take three years to start to work. I had told the neurosurgeon, no, it's gonna take a year. Well, it was gone in a year and a half. Um, that had to do with modern medicine and eating right and exercising and taking care of myself. But during that time, um, I sat up here and most of you wouldn't have known it, um, I lost most of my hair. It was the most horrible experience that I went through and going through our medical system, which I've worked in, um, it's not there to care for you. It, it, it is a traumatic experience. Um, and it does leave you with wounds and scars and some PTSD. Um, and my point is, there are some things that happen to us that are not visible on the outside. Um, so just keep that in mind when you're, you're dealing with people, but AVMs are very rare. We say it's one in a million, um, and I think some of that is because people don't find out about them until they're older. Um, so most people walk around and never know that they have them. Um, so I just wanted to bring awareness to AVMs as well as seizures and that there's many different types and there is a stigma around that that we need to break. Um, so thank you for listening to this and I'm gonna end on a happy note. Uh, nope, one more thing. Uh, nope, one more thing. Um, I have since, I think we went a couple of months ago when Andrew and I went out to the Days Inn. Since then, I've been popping up unexpected, sometimes a couple of times a day, sometimes on the weekend, sometimes at night, sometimes in the morning. I have not seen any issue, um, no issues that were brought to me in previous meetings, um, including the pets. I've made sure, I walked in rooms, obviously I had permission, but they didn't know I was coming, so they just let me in. I've checked on animals, I know the vet that is now working with them and taking care of some of the animals and making sure everything's okay. But I also see what Andrew was talking about. Um, but overall, I am pleased with what I saw. And now I'll end on a happy note. Um, obviously you've heard me talk about the medical system. Um, I have a problem with my back. I had a chiropractor down in Delaware County for years, he was great. I don't have him anymore. I didn't wanna go anywhere, but I found Chiropractic and Wellness Center up here on High Street. That visit ended with a, um, video testimonial and a hug. That was one of the best medical experiences I've ever had. From the time you pick up that phone, there is no you've reached, press this number, press that. Somebody answers the phone. They're compassionate and kind and you can hear the smile in her voice. Her name's Stephanie. Um, she is a lovely human and the doctor is just as wonderful and it's just a lovely experience. I walked out of there in significantly less pain and he described to me exactly what I was feeling. Um, so if you have any back problems, neck problems, even arthritis, he helped me with my hand. Um, definitely check them out, they're like three minutes up the road. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Counselor Braskin.
I'd like to thank our borough manager, Justin, for going on a, a kind of short tour of the first ward. And we kind of walked around and looked at firsthand, uh, issues with property maintenance and find out how to deal with it.
Good.
And then there was a, you know, great turnout for National Night Out last night. There was, it wasn't, you know, ninety-five degrees and raining, so it was very, you know, pleasant. And I hope everybody got a chance to read, uh, the article that was in the, in, in Mercury that Evan wrote about, uh, our bail reform letter. And like to thank you again for the support with that, for sure. As far as the drone goes, I hope we never have to use it.
It'd be nice. Mayor Henrik.
Um, I just wanted to respond quickly to that gentleman. Very briefly, I'm happy to talk to you afterwards, but I think maybe there was a misunderstanding of what I said, so I apologize. Um, there's no, like, secret harboring of any criminals or any weird underground, whatever you think. Um, I may, was mostly saying that we had a group of people that are in the county and such who know things that are going on and can fact-check when things are on Facebook and people are saying, uh, you know, there's a raid here, raid there, what's happening? Um, like, I am getting actual, like, facts, so I didn't want people to freak out over what they were seeing on Facebook. And the Pottstown Police Department does not interfere with ICE, but they are also not ICE. They are in the business of, uh, following the Pennsylvania Crimes Code and the Vehicles Code. So they have nothing to do with ICE and I, and we do not harbor criminals. Does that answer some of your question? Okay. I promise, there's no secret. Given the, uh, given social media and how people are very hyped up, um, this was, uh, a conversation that a bunch of us had to ensure that all of, we could relay, we could ease people's fears when they read all the stuff on social media and explain, like, the situation, uh, that you brought up, why that person was arrested. And that, that was just cause. Thanks.
Thank you. I have nothing more to add, so media adjourned.